Fishkill Planning Board, meeting dated March 21st, 2023. Will everyone please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to start by introducing two representatives of our Fire Advisory Board. We have Fab Chair David Palin is with us this evening and Fire District Commissioner Chris Chudlowski. Good evening, welcome.
Thank you.
They'll be joining us at the professionals' tables at most, if not all of our meetings. We appreciate Craig Arco's efforts to kind of help arrange all of this. Upcoming meeting dates are April 18th, 2023, and May 16th, 2023. We have three meeting minutes to look at. I want to hold over February 21st meeting minutes so I have a chance to review those. The January 17th meeting minutes actually need to have a resolution added to them for the action that we took on Hudson Valley Logistics Center. That will be done, but subject to that, can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll abstain since I wasn't present.
Okay, and then we also had meeting minutes for January 23rd, 2023, a short meeting. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I'll abstain.
I need to abstain from that one too, I wasn't there.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, both carry. First item on the agenda is Tucker Trail Subdivision.
Hello, hello?
Good evening.
So I was here last month. Two things was the issue regarding some tree removal, which we had that area staked out, and I believe that we're set on that. The other one is I actually came back last month asking for an extension, but my understanding was that maybe you didn't need it for a year, but in fact, it's good for six months. I have to come back and ask for those three-month extensions as it goes on. You're allowed to get an extension beyond a year, but tonight I'm here just to ask for those two, three-month extensions, and I don't intend to come back here for another one because we're kind of close.
Okay, any questions or comments by members of the board or by our professionals? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to approve two, three-month extensions.
Come on.
So, second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, carries, thank you.
Thanks all.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Kevin Keegan.
Hello Board, my name is Alex Martin from Kessman Solar, representing Kevin Keegan.
And if I could, before we start, I apologize for interrupting you, could I have a motion to open the public hearing for this?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing's open, please go ahead.
I had a new site plan submitted, I'll just review what had changed between those. The first change was that we represented the plants, or the trees that are planted and existing on the property, and I had submitted a photo just to show their arrangement from the perspective of the array to the public road. And then the other change, because it had come up as a question about the septic fields, the footprint of the array had a slight overlap into the septic field. I had it confirmed on-site that that had been a graphical error just to our site plan, but also that the footprint of the array on each of those corners is not where the penetrations will take place, and within the racking specs, there is a penetration sheet, so each one of the blue rectangles is where the helical screws will be put in, so even from the footprint of the array, the closest penetration would still be forty-one and a quarter inches from the edge of the footprint. Other than that, the plan is as presented at the last meeting, and if there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to go with them.
Any questions or comments from our board members? Anything from our professionals?
No, the only thing is that if you could just let us know the date of the new plan, because we've referenced the old plan in the resolution, I believe.
The date of the new plan is January 24th.
Okay, I have that date, actually.
It appears that's correct in the resolution. Are there any members of the public here to speak for or against the project? If not, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I've got a resolution. Solar panel installation, Keegan Residence, Seventeen Sunny Lane, resolution offered by Planning Board member John Eichman, whereas the applicant applied for a site plan and special permit approval under Chapter 100 of the East Fishkill Town Code for Tier Two Solar Energy System, and whereas the applicant is proposing to add a new ground-mounted solar panels in the same general location as the existing array, and whereas there's an existing septic field which limits the potential location for solar panels, and whereas the proposed location of the new solar array would require a sideline variance from the Zoning Board of Appeals, whereas the applicant applied for and received a fifty-foot sideline variance on January 24th, 2023, after the Zoning Board of Appeals determined that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood as there is already existing ground-mounted solar panels in the same general location as the proposed ground-mounted solar panel, and the location has been chosen to limit neighbors' views of the proposed panels, and whereas a public hearing for a Tier Two Solar Energy System special permit and site plan was opened and closed on March 21st, 2023, whereas the proposed action is a Type II action under SEAKER and no further SEAKER
Brian Stokosa, Dan Stokosa Engineering, this is the Free House Bridges subdivision on
review is required, now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Board hereby grants a
Eater Road. Been in front of the board for a while, we used to have four lots proposed on this parcel,
special permit and site plan approval for a Tier Two Solar Energy System for the above
and upon consultation with the town engineer and highway department, we felt it was best
project as represented on a map entitled Keegan Ground Mount Solar, prepared by Kessman
to pull back the larger lot in the rear, which was formerly referred to as Lot One,
Solar dated 9/5/22 and last revised 1/24/23.
it was the bigger piece. So now we're just a three-lot subdivision.
And be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution,
So looking at Eater Road, we have the house that's currently under construction, that's
the Chair or other duly authorized member of the Planning Board shall cause a copy
now going to be considered Lot One, then we have Lot Two and Lot Three on the border
of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
of Eater Road. Just looking at it from a drainage standpoint, and from a disturbance standpoint, we understood
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
the concerns that the town had regarding runoff, and we were sensitive to the neighbors to
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
that respect, so we talked to the applicant, and we actually pulled back that development
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
of Lot One. The applicant is eager to move forward with the subdivision process as he's moving into
Next item on the agenda is Fire's Bridges Subdivision.
the house that's currently under construction.
This is an adjourned public hearing, could I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
I believe his wife is pushing that along fairly hard, so we'd like to try to wrap up
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
this subdivision rather quickly, and taking that Lot One off, I think avoids a lot of
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
questions regarding runoff and neighbors and disturbance. So we've amended the plan accordingly, and we try to incorporate some of the town engineer comments that we've had since our last meeting. I think one of the things that we've talked about but didn't actually make it onto the plan was some kind of a buffer strip around the edge of the property to protect the neighbors, and some kind of a vegetative buffer between this development and the neighbors, and we are willing to do that. We were thinking, I think in the area of like a fifty or seventy-five foot buffer around the rear of the property, so that just didn't make it onto the plan, but we did have a conversation with the applicant about that. And I think that's a major plan update, but I think it's an update that the board and the consultants were looking toward.
So buffer being just like arbivites, like greenery buffer?
So you're in a heavily wooded area up there, there's heavy, heavy tree canopy with minimal undergrowth, so basically just, let's just keep a buffer there, let's designate it on the property so that we avoid things like clearcutting? I think that came up in some of the other public hearings.
Yeah, that definitely came up in some of the previous meetings, and we want to make sure that there's a buffer to stop anything from going that way.
And the intent is to be sensitive to the neighbor and...
I think, Brian, we were hoping actually for some sort of conservation easement on the back of the property, so that there would be no disturbance to that area in the future, no tree removal and no changes in the topography that could end up resulting in any stormwater impacts.
Yeah, we reviewed it with the applicant, he would like to play around with some dimensions of that area, because he would like to actually use that property since it's going to be part of his Lot One, so I don't have, we've talked about it, but I don't have a graphical area of where that could be, maybe we could address that at final approval?
So we can have, we could add that as a condition that we would, you know, because you'd have to provide the subdivision plot with the actual disturbance area or non-disturbance area shown on it, so we could have that as a condition of approval that we would do that and discuss it like with the engineer to make sure that...
I don't want the neighbors to kind of have a...
Yeah, we have to have at least a minimum understanding of what that's going to be.
Minimum understanding, yeah. Yeah, and I think that was the buffer around the edge of the property, that was the last I remember.
What is it, a hundred feet, fifty feet, two hundred feet, what are we talking about?
The numbers we were talking about before, I think, are in the fifty to seventy-five range. I mean, if you look at the edge of the property, and it really starts to drop off as you approach the edge of the property, so it's, to me, there wouldn't be disturbance there to begin with, you know, because of the slopes that are there.
I haven't walked it back at a property, so I don't know. People here are more familiar with it than we are.
Are there minimum requirements for conservation easement, like is there something that's like a minimum?
No, it depends on the site.
Okay, so it's all site-specific then?
Yes.
I mean, I don't know if we could write it in such a way that they'd be allowed to, you know, use it for like walking, for passive recreation, you know, for walking or whatever. It'd just be that you couldn't remove any vegetation, you couldn't change any topography, anything that would affect the stormwater.
That could be written, yeah, there is flexibility. I think we did something like Hunter's Ridge, on the backside of Hunter's Ridge, the same concept, and the applicant was willing to do that. It's just, we'd probably like to quantify that as we roll through the board health process.
Well, we would need to know where it is, because, where the line is, because obviously we need to be able to know if we had to enforce anything, so certainly he should account for whatever he wants for his backyard and whatever he would need for his septic, but beyond that...
Right, so I think right now what we were saying was like fifty to seventy-five feet.
But it's huge.
How far is the house from the back line? Approximately?
Substantial.
Like what?
You're a hundred feet, on Lot One alone, you're probably a thousand feet.
Thousand feet?
Yeah.
So Lot Twenty, Lot One is huge.
So if you give a fifty-foot buffer, he's got a nine, he's got a three football field in his backyard.
Right, but the backyard is like this. I mean, the guy, I mean, he's, you know, he's going to have...
Do you have another sheet up there you can show us the lot?
Yeah, he's going to have eighteen acres, I'm sure he'd like to use it somehow, I mean, not clearing it, but, I mean...
Well, he can use it with a conservation easement.
Sure.
I think that's what we're talking about, is not clearing it. They cut three football fields.
No, that's not the intent, but if you can see how close these topo lines are, you know, toward the backyard and toward the sides, it really, it really starts to, I mean, you're dropping, even on the side, you're dropping in fifty feet, you're dropping thirty feet on the property lines in elevation.
Then how does that affect the change from what we originally saw for the four-lot subdivision? Was there, like, where was that fourth lot, and how does this all impinge or change that?
Well, the development of Lot One was always in the center of that piece, right? There was no intention to really develop the sides of the piece, other than access, there was an access point along the north side of the lot that actually kind of...
Cut alongside.
Root along the hillside and then cut up and in.
So then there would be no further action thereafter, once these houses were subdivided and placed on the land?
There's no intent to develop that piece right now, it's just, you know, from a drainage standpoint, we went over with him the constraints that we would have to go through, and there would have to be involvement with possibly the neighbors, and it's just, there's nothing prohibiting it, he'd have to come back.
Yeah, and then does that...
Conservation easement would...
That's what I'm saying, so then it would cut into that parcel of what was to follow that track along the backside.
It would be a constraint, yeah.
Yeah.
So I guess I had thought that we expected probably a larger buffer, if you will, that was not going to be, clearcutting was the issue, as you've already acknowledged, and if you're saying that he doesn't intend to do clearcutting on a major piece of that, then can that quote "buffer" be much, yeah, much larger?
I mean, it's something I could bring back to the applicant, he's not here tonight to speak for it, but if we're going to restrict his property, I'd have to review it with him. I mean, what is the board thinking right now, so I can give him some information?
I think, I think it's actually more that, I think it's to avoid a significant adverse stormwater impact, so they want, they want the area to remain untouched so that you avoid any potential for runoff in the future and, you know, ten years, twenty years in perpetuity.
To me, that sounds like they're putting the whole piece under conservation.
No, we were thinking of, you know, having the house, the area that where the house is, and a reasonable backyard, and then the hillside, I mean, it's, how many acres? Is it sixteen acres, right, or something?
Eighteen acres.
Eighteen acres, yeah, so, I mean, he's not going to have eighteen acres of lawn, and if it's, if it's like this, he can't have eighteen acres of lawn, because it'll be runoff coming off of it.
Understood.
So, so I think what would be helpful to me, and I think maybe that's what you're saying, is you go back to the homeowner, you determine where that line is going to be, and then come back to us and we can look at it.
And where the grade falls off, so if it's, you know, I'm not going to use the term unusable, but if there's some degree...
There's a large portion of property that's unusable. You know, we could identify that and put that in conservation, but there's, there is a piece of property that he'd like to use, you know, if he has, you know, kids to explore the backyard.
So I don't think that's unreasonable for him to figure out where the backyard would be, but then we'd like to see, we'd like to see where that line is, so we can kind of look at it stormwater-wise.
Conservation easement doesn't prohibit anybody from exploring.
Right.
Well, it prohibits clearing and building a structure and subdividing, but it doesn't prohibit walking through nature.
Understood. I just, I want to bring it back...
By definition, it's a conservation easement.
I'd like to discuss it with him and bring it back to you, I don't want to make that decision for him.
Okay.
Okay. Christian, have we dealt with all the stormwater issues as far as you're concerned?
Yeah, the reduction of the scope of the project is addressed, the comments, they just need to revise the SWIP just to reflect the new conditions, but it's a pro forma, just want to make sure that what's approved by the board is what's on the approved map.
Okay. Are there any other issues or comments or questions by the board or the professionals? If not, I'll ask, is there a member of the public here which is to speak in favor of or against the project? Yes, sir. Please sign in when you come up and let us know your name.
Richard Martin, 198 Devon Farms Road. I'm neither for nor against, I'm just seeking clarity. Thank you. I heard one of the pieces of property is no longer going to be used, is that the fifteen-acre parcel?
So the...
The upper portion of the property we're not proposing to develop?
There's, it went from four lots to three lots.
Correct. My concern is the horizontal and vertical axis in terms of the buffer to 198 Devon Farms Road, my property, it butts, I believe it's the fifteen-acre parcel, the horizontal axis being, if you will, Devon Farms Road, or those are the backyards of Devon Farms Road property, and the vertical axis being my actual property line going up, and did we, did you say there's going to be no property, no development to that property, that it's now three houses?
Yeah, it's all along Eater Road, there's no development on that hillside, near the north.
Okay, so the only concern I would still have is the conservation that you're referring to, or, I'm concerned about clearcutting that hill, because just Monday, when we had the snowstorm, I've got four drains coming down that I installed, and it floods, I mean, there's just, there's no way about it, it's like this. So if we take those trees out, it becomes a major, major concern, so that's my concern, and I don't think we have clarity on that, I think he wanted to come back and, am I correct?
I believe so.
Conservation easement part is still a question.
Yes.
He's going to talk to the landowner, and then I'm assuming we're going to have a...
And I think what we'll do, I mean, is we'll keep the public hearing open for one more meeting until we hear back from the applicant's engineer as to the definition of where that conservation easement's going to be.
I do think it's a significant improvement to go from four lots to three here, because now you're not going to have...
Absolutely, I'm not trying to prevent anybody from doing anything, I'm just trying to be a good neighbor and figure out how that impacts me, but, you know, so I do thank you for listening and have a good night.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Yes, sir, and please sign in.
So, at this point, he's not building any new houses on, he was looking to build the eleven, is that correct?
That's a different indication.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any other members of the public? If not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Brian, did you want to start with the presentation, or should we start with the discussion of stormwater?
I'll open it up and give everybody in the public an update on what we've been doing behind the scenes since we were last in front of the board. At the last public hearing, obviously drainage was a concern, and layout and positioning of some of the lots, specifically Lot Ten, was brought up, and then also how we're dealing with the stormwater associated with the front half of the lot, which treats the road, and let's say lots one through three, and then Lot Ten, Nine, and Eleven. What we did is, we originally were showing some infiltrators, and then we switched to like an open basin concept infiltration trench. We have done stormwater testing out on site, we've gone down about fifteen feet, as far as we could go with an excavator, it's all sand and gravel, no signs of groundwater in the area. We've also researched some of the recent well data, well test logs in the area, they indicate sandy gravel to a depth of around fifty feet with groundwater at about elevation twenty-five below grade. So the whole corridor, if you know, has, doesn't have any drainage along Route 82, just because of the infiltration-ness of the soil, so taking that into account, and what DEC actually recommends is, you know, groundwater recharge. So what we did is, we're capturing all the stormwater that's associated with the road that we're proposing and some of the upper homes, we're bringing it down, and we're introducing that into a hydrodynamic separator where it does the pretreatment, and then we discharge into a basin that will be about fifty feet wide and about a hundred and ten feet long. That basin will be offset into the property of Lot Ten, and it's, it will normally be dry during heavier storms, so there will be some stormwater that will elevate up into it, but then it'll eventually infiltrate through the basin, or the bottom of the basin. Again, the purpose of the pretreatment with the hydrodynamic separator is to remove all the sediment so that over time the basin doesn't become clogged, and there's maintenance criteria behind that that ensures that treatment units are being properly maintained. Knowing that there's a basin along the side of Route 82, and if you had their safety, we put a berm around the edge of the basin that's inside the property, it'll be about two foot high, it's an earth berm, and then on top of that, we'll put evergreen trees spaced tightly around the basin. We reviewed the engineer's comments, they're technical in merit, we understand, you know, the design concept from an engineering standpoint, appears to be acceptable, it's just working through the minutia of details and providing some more information and supplemental information to support the design. That deals with the front of the parcel, as we kind of go toward the back, which would be considered, I guess, Phase Two, is Phase Two drains toward the back toward an adjoining property owner. The adjoining property owner was pretty vocal at the last meeting, and we actually made an effort to reach out to him, and he reached out to us, and since January, February-ish, we've been working with the neighbor, the neighbor is to the south, and he owns, his family owns several properties and north of the property, and he had a concern regarding stormwater, so we met with him, he also had a concern regarding buffering between our lots, let's say, six, seven, eight, nine, and eleven. So what we did is, we tried to move some of the homes on our side further north to give him more of a buffer. In addition, the applicant is considering entering into contract by Lot Seven of Phase Two, and with that, we were talking about a mechanism to try to give his property, his family's property, some additional buffer, so we actually extended a portion of his lot line down toward Route 82, it's like a ten-foot sliver that he would control just to ensure that there was never any cutting there or anything that would be placed in that area, just to give him a little bit more of a buffer. We've gone over the drainage with the applicant and how the drainage functions, it's very similar on the backside, there's a squail that will just gather some of the runoff from the individual lots, it goes into a biotreatment facility, and then it goes into an infiltration basin, similar concept toward the front. There's very coarse sand and gravel toward the back of the property, and it would be the same practice as in the front, stormwater would be mitigated through infiltration, again, following DEC protocol. I believe the applicant submitted a letter to the board, I hope that they received that and went through it, but we've been trying to make an effort to work with the neighbors, understanding that this is something different in the area, but being sensitive to their needs. From an overall planning standpoint, I know we had a, we had a concern regarding the house size and placement on Lot Ten, that's the parcel with the stormwater basin in the front on it, if believe it or not, the footprint that we're showing is equivalent to a thirty-five-hundred square foot home, some of the larger homes that we show on the parcel are upward to about four thousand square foot, so we tried to show some realistic sized lots and home styles here that seem to be going up in the area. Again, it meets the character, we're in the R1 zone, one acre zoning, you know, individual well, I mean, individual septic systems are proposed, it does fit that density and design criteria that's in the R1 zone, so, other than that, we took this, knowing that we had a pretty solid review from the town engineer on a preliminary basis, we took this application, and we've made it an application to DOT, now that we show this basin in the front to get their input, because we are next to their corridor. I don't have comments from them yet, but that was initiated this week, so I can provide the town correspondence to that effect that it was submitted. You know, other than that, that's the real update, I think the drainage was key in how we're treating the stormwater.
Unfortunately, I did not see the letter that was addressed to the board, could you possibly just give us a quick summary of...
It was just that, you know, the applicant was working with our office and addressing positioning of buffering and... And he had a concern regarding stormwater, so we met with him. He also had a concern regarding buffering between our lots, let's say, six, seven, eight, nine, and 11. So what we did is, we tried to move some of the homes on our side further north to give him more of a buffer. In addition, the applicant is considering entering into contract by Lot 7 of Phase 2. And with that, we were talking about a mechanism to try to give his property, his family's property, some additional buffer. So we actually extended a portion of his lot line down toward Route 82. It's like a 10-foot sliver that he would control just to ensure that there was never any cutting there or anything that would be placed in that area, just to give him a little bit more of a buffer. We've gone over the drainage with the applicant and how the drainage functions. It's very similar on the backside. There's a squail that will just gather some of the runoff from the individual lots. It goes into a biotreatment facility, and then it goes into an infiltration basin. Similar concept toward the front. There's, there's very coarse sand and gravel toward the back of the property, and it would be the same practice as in the front. Stormwater would be mitigated through infiltration, again, following DEC protocol. I believe the applicant submitted a letter to the board. I hope that they received that and went through it, but we've been trying to make an effort to work with the neighbors, understanding that this is something different in the area, but being sensitive to their needs. From an overall planning standpoint, I know we had a, we had a concern regarding the house size and placement on Lot 10. That's the parcel with the stormwater basin in the front on it. If, believe it or not, the footprint that we're showing is equivalent to a 3,500 square foot home. Some of the larger homes that we show on the parcel are upward to about 4,000 square foot. So we try to show some realistic sized lots and, and home styles here that seem to be going up in the area. Again, it meets the character. We're in the R1 zone, one acre zoning, you know, individual well, I mean, individual septic systems are proposed. It does fit that density and, and design criteria that's in the R1 zone. So, other than that, we took this, knowing that we had a pretty solid review from the town engineer on a preliminary basis, we took this application, and we've made it, an application to DOT now that we show this basin in the front to get their input because we are next to their corridor. I don't have comments from them yet, but that was initiated this week. So I can provide the town correspondence to that effect that it was submitted. You know, other than that, that's, that's the real update. I think the drainage was key in, in how we're treating the stormwater.
Unfortunately, I did not see the letter that was addressed to the board. Could you possibly just give us a quick summary of...
It was just that, you know, the applicant was working with, with our office and addressing positioning of buffering and placement of that, that buffer strip down to Route 82. It should have been submitted digitally to the town. If you don't have it, I know we have a copy here.
Okay.
And I believe that the applicant, I mean, the homeowner who penned the letter is, is here tonight. I could speak on behalf of it as part of the public hearing.
Excellent. Perhaps this would be a good point to, to bring up some of the stormwater issues?
Sure. Brian's actually given a few clarifications that we weren't aware of, so that's actually very helpful. Helpful to know that they've done some of their soil testing because that was one of our comments, that that wasn't complete yet, so we couldn't really give an opinion as to whether he had enough capacity in the ponds. So I'm happy to hear that. A couple of general things before going into some specific comments. On lots 10 and Lot 6, the easement, just so the board knows, the easement areas that are being proposed are very large easement areas that are going to eat up a lot of the lots, a lot of the area of the lot that people wouldn't necessarily be able to say, oh, that's my backyard, that the town could be going in and doing maintenance and that sort of thing. So it's just something to be aware of, of what's being approved, just for the size of it.
Do you know what the, the actual percentage of the lots?
Lot 10, I think, is close to about 40%, and Lot 6 in the back has got to be close to 50%.
And are we just, are we saying the maintenance is, is going to be the responsibility of the town?
Of the, I'm assuming that there would be a stormwater maintenance district formed, and then that would say that the maintenance would have to be done by the town, unless there was a homeowners association being proposed. But somebody has to go in and maintain and make sure that things are being operated, especially now if we're talking about infiltration basins. That was one of the other things that was not on the plans before. We, it was a basin, Lot 10, it said stormwater basin. The one in the back of Lot 6, it was proposed dry detention. But the infiltration is actually, we made comments on that. We'd rather see that. Infiltration is great, but they can get clogged, so we have to definitely have provisions for doing the maintenance and make sure that the maintenance gets done.
So the requirement would be that a piece of equipment would have to go back there?
Yes, typically. You'd go in every so often, and you want to dig out and remove the sediment. An infiltration basin, for example, they'll have to do the, the full design and have a backup drain to it. So we'll probably have to look at that because there's not any pipes along the street or any place to drain it to. But I think he can design the bottom so there's kind of a backup that if the surface does get clogged with sediment, there's a backup to it that's a little bit higher, that when you see that, hey, the water's not draining out of the bottom, that's when the town has to come in, and they're going to have to scrape the bottom, get the fine sediments off, and get it reworking again.
So the, the accessibility would be like through a vac truck, or would...
No, on something like this, it would typically be through a, an excavator and a, and a dump truck, and you use a flat, a wide flat bucket on an excavator, scrape the sediment out. Now, the hydrodynamic separator that he discussed, that's something you'd clean with a vac truck, but that's located in the street.
So that's an easiest access for that because it's a big piece of equipment.
Correct. If maintenance occurs on that on a very regular basis, then what Brian said is 100% correct that that'll protect the basin from having issues in the long run.
Okay.
And the, and the basin on the street, it'd be accessed how?
Well, that, that was another comment, that there is no, it does not show how the access will be since the, a portion of that easement goes up to the proposed road, but it's right on the, the radius of the curb. So they can't really access there, so they're really, the only access that they would potentially have right now is off of Route 82. So that would be a bit of a concern. I don't know if there's a way that they could maybe find a little bit of a better access to that.
Yeah, we could.
So that was general comments. As far as additional comments that we had on the overall subdivision plan, they're going to, they're proposing to file it in phases, so they're going to need an overall subdivision plan that shows Phase 1 and 2. And then the, we would like to see the road design driveway locations. Have the highway superintendent take a look at that?
Yeah, I can speak to that. I did look at the plan with the highway superintendent today. He had a concern about where that snow easement is. It's like tucked kind of behind where the plow would normally plow to. So if that could be massaged a little bit to get it across the cul-de-sac instead of back over the right shoulder, so to speak, as you drive in, that was his comment on that.
Absolutely. I reached out to Ken's office today and just said if we could get together this week, that'd be great, but I'll address it with him.
And the cul-de-sac meets the requirements from the fire advisory board for truck safety?
It's, it's the town standard spec that's been in play for years.
Then as far as the site plan layout goes, we'd like to, we're asking to see all wells that are within 200 feet. They're going to have to do that for the health department anyways. But I think it's good for everybody to see here because there are a lot of neighbors, and it sounds like that there's been some neighbors that have come out with some questions. Back to stormwater, what I had mentioned before was some of the practices we were unsure because they weren't labeled correctly. So we'd like to see labeling that matches up to the New York State Stormwater Design Manual. With the town being in MS4, we have to ensure that all the practices align with the manual. The soil testing, that was one of our, our requests, so I'm happy to see that that's done now. As far as the, in the back of Lot 6, they're proposing a dry detention basin. Now, Brian has mentioned that that's going to be infiltration. So with that being an infiltration basin, he might actually be able to make that a little bit bigger and maybe remove the bio-retention. That was another thought of ours, is there was a very large bio-retention area. Bio-retention is used for stormwater quality treatment, but bio-retention is also one of the most expensive to maintain. So leaving that with the district and the people that would ultimately live there, it's very costly. So I always look to point that out, what we're getting into, and that you have residents who are upset later on because why is my bill so, so high? So I think that they could probably do, remove that and handle everything with the infiltration basin. The other, the other thing that we had commented on in that same location was previously with the proposed dry detention basin, that area, they were, they had a discharge pipe that was coming out and pretty much aimed at the backyards of the houses there. So that always kind of alerts me that that's something we want to look at really hard because that is something that even if we can make it work from an engineering standpoint, the perception of it sometimes is something we want to be very careful about. But I think if we're getting away from the dry detention and we go to infiltration, we can probably look at that. Maybe he can oversize that basin a little bit so we know that the, the 100-year storm and maybe a little bit more stays within that basin, and we avoid those kind of issues. As far as some of their detailing goes, seeing on, on some of their details, we'd like to see all the different water elevations that are going to be, so when he gets a final design, they'll design that typically in HydroCAD in their details for the section of the infiltration basins. We'd like to see it shown right where the water levels are modeled to be, so then we can see it, and then the board can see it as well, too, how much, how high the water would get. As far as the bio-retention area, which I don't think is going to happen now, we were asking for a planting plan, so that doesn't need to happen. We need a few more clarifications within the actual SWIP itself as far as some of their calculated values. And then they have a couple of lots that have infiltration chambers, and there seems to be a little bit of a confusion of how many chambers are on each lot, so we'd like them to clarify that as well, too. I think that's pretty much the highlights of the, the comments.
Now, how does that work if somebody has septic and there's wells here on these lots? It's well and septic in both?
This is central water and so is the...
Oh, it's central water. So then they would still get a water sewer bill even though they're septic, right?
No, they'll only get a water bill.
Just to work, so even though we're going to service those lots with these items that would be required the town to service, they don't get a...
Well, that would be under a stormwater district.
Okay.
So then they'll get, they'll get a separate charge in their town bill for that.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or anything by professionals before I open it up to the public?
I just, I just had a couple things. I know when we met, we talked about that berm along 82. We kind of used Clove Branch and Eagles Ridge as like an example of what we're, we're thinking, which is considerably more than two feet, but ultimately, you know, it's up to the board to decide. But that's what we had kind of envisioned to completely, you know, shield that, that feature. The other thing that was brought up as far as accessing the ponds and talked to the highway super, again, that one pond on 82, we, we can't access it from the new proposed road. We don't want to access it from the shoulder of 82, so we would need to have an area that, like, like we do in the back pond where we can pull off the road, turn around, and drive back out onto 82. We don't want to be backing out or working on the side.
If there's a berm there, would you be able to even access it?
Only that's something that they'll have to work through.
There's, there's enough area there. We can show something. I'll coordinate that with the highway department hopefully this week.
I mean, the berm should be planted, too.
On the, on the plat, Brian, it looked like the easement area changed from Phase 1 to Phase 2 on that, I think, Lot 10. If you can speak to that.
The easement area on Lot 10?
Look at the plat. It shows a Phase 1 and a Phase 2, and the, and the size of it changes.
It goes from .24 to .41 acres.
That's just probably just a CAD, a CAD layering issue. We'll, we'll make sure they're coordinated.
Because I don't know how you would increase it after you've built on that lot and sold that lot. How would you ever go back and increase the size of that easement?
I'll look at it. Get clarification. I don't think it's a showstopper.
And, and the only other thing is, I know we didn't witness the, the testing, but we are getting flooding over by the solar farm right down the road from you. So it might be a sediment issue trapped on the surface, but it is very important that these ponds are, are maintained because, you know, there is an issue right down the road.
Okay. Additional comments or questions? I'll open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public here to speak for or against the project?
The first thing, none of the neighbors were aware, so I mean, none of them even made it tonight. I know at least four or five of my other neighbors, if they'd been notified, would have been here.
Well, we'll, we'll adjourn this public hearing until a later date, probably next month, so that, so that we'll have an opportunity for the neighbors to come.
Now, it's still 11 properties on that? Now, is he planning on just clearing all the trees again, like what he did with the first three lots?
Well, you have to clear trees and build houses, yes.
Well, I mean, I know in my backyard this summer, I could even, I could barely even use it because I used to have plenty of bats that took care of all the mosquitoes and bugs. They're federally protected. He killed so many bats that I had almost no bats. I couldn't even be in my backyard once it got dark. And can something be done to make sure that, to check, make sure they're not killing bat habitats and stuff? And no other protected species are over there?
That is subject to rules by the DEC, and, and something we'll take into consideration as we...
And I know I spoke, all my neighbors got together, and we all just, they all have the same issue that, we, we used to have plenty of bats back there. You can't even use your backyard in, in the summer anymore. So hopefully it'll be adjourned, and everyone will be getting notified. I'm sure that they would love to be here. Thank you.
Additional members of the public? Yes, sir. Please sign in. Thank you.
My name is Andrea Seifert. We've been up in Hopewell Junction for over 81 years. Our properties connect with the Phillips property, and I'm just going to read this letter I wrote up.
Okay.
I reside at 1149 Route 82, Parcel 684306. I'm a direct neighbor of the applicant's property. I also own properties parcel number 703295, 739278, 650324, as well as 703295. My neighbors Gary and Wendy Bigtron, they live at 1155 Route 82, Parcel 723288, and Roxanne McLachlan, 46 Hamilton Road, Parcel 6733. They have authorized me to speak on their behalf. I met with the applicants on, on my behalf and my neighbors to discuss the subdivision. The development we reviewed, the stormwater designed, we really have no concerns except that there has to be an access to that to maintain it, which will be minor. It's no big deal. If it has to be, we like to know. The applicant's engineer relocated the proposal, the proposed house and driveway located at Lot 11 to allow additional separation from Parcel 739278. I appreciate this relocation. Do you want to have a same thing here on a plan here if you want to see it? I have relayed to the applicant that I would like to build a home on Lot Number 6 of the proposed development. This interests me because the structures on my properties, Bigtron's family and the Dachlan family, the Abrew family, properties are very close to the property line shared with the applicant. I would like to have much privacy as possible. After meeting with me and considering all my concerns, the applicant has created a buffer strip that would be owned by Lot Number 6. This buffer strip would allow the screening and privacy. That's my primary goals. The applicant and their engineer understood all our concerns and have made changes to the plans to satisfy our concerns. We understand that the applicant has made an as-of-right development application seeking few lots to allow under the building code. We are therefore here to voice our support in the favor of the application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do you want to leave a copy of that letter with our planning department? You can leave that with Jackie, and we'll make that a part of the record. Any other members of the public to speak for or against the project? If not, Brian, I think there's, there's still some things that you're working on, and, and I think other members of the public that probably would like to have an opportunity to come in. So we'll adjourn the public hearing until the next meeting. Does that work? So could I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing for Farm View Estates at Phillips Farm until the April 18th, 2023 meeting?
So moved.
Do we have any other planning or engineering comments? That's everything we've heard tonight and seen is, is, there's nothing additional? Just, just so I can respond accordingly.
Before I call for a vote, let's, are there any other comments or questions?
So the spillway is going to be eliminated, the one that points out the back?
That's what it, that's what it sounds like. We need to see the engineering.
Well, the DOT comments.
Yes, yeah.
So, so the DOT stuff, too?
There, there's still some follow-up things that we'll be looking for, but if there's nothing else new...
Access to the other pond.
Do we have details around the pond, like fencing details? Do we have all that?
No, they haven't.
And then the access points for the service?
We, yeah, we can provide all these details. I'm, from a seeker's standpoint, are we missing anything just from resubmission standpoint?
Do you, have you heard from DEC yet?
I have not.
Okay.
But that's common with a lot of projects.
Yeah.
I'm sure that the town hasn't heard anything from circulation or something.
Is that enough time?
That's, that's why I asked, will the 18th work, April 18th, to come back with, with answers to pretty much all of this. So I do have a motion and a second to adjourn the public hearing on this project to April 18th, 2023. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right. Brian, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is special subdivision. May I have a motion to open the public hearing for this project?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. This is a project, by the way, that still requires variances that I think the applicant plans to get at the end of this month, at the next zoning board meeting. But, but we can still take a look at the overall plan and, and pass a neg deck on the project, perhaps.
Bill Povell, I'm the engineer for the applicant, Sal Spiziali. This is a two-lot subdivision we're proposing on Route 52. It's between Carpenter Road and 216 on the south side of Route 52. Right now, there's an existing house and a shared driveway to a barn in the back, and we're proposing a second house on a second lot. So it's a two-lot subdivision we're proposing. As we've gone through the board, it was determined that we needed a variance for the shed in order to keep that side yard setback, as well as we were proposing to keep the driveway at the width that it is now, which is less than the code. So what we've done is we've applied to the ZBA for two variances. This application's gone before them two times, second one being a public hearing. There were no comments. There was no... second one being a public hearing. There were no comments. There was no negative indications from the board, but they said they can't make a determination decision until a neg deck is issued or seeker's complete. So with the planning board being the lead agency, we're back tonight hoping to work towards that goal. As far as the plan is concerned, there was some engineering comments regarding the floodplain and the elevations. We did update the datum to the USGS datum. We located the floodplain and we're really conservative in locating it. And the purpose for that was for the environmentally sensitive land calculations to make sure that lot one had the minimum acreage that's required. We did adjust the line between the existing house and the proposed house to make lot one slightly bigger to assure that it meets the minimum three-quarter acre of usable land. We did resubmit that. Other than that, you know, we're really just waiting to get through with the ZBA.
Have you laid out one of the requirements of the special permit for the shared driveways that you can actually show that you can get a driveway on there?
We submitted that initially.
Did you? Okay, because I just want to make sure.
This property has significant road frontage, so having two separate driveways, there's plenty of frontage for that.
But you mentioned width being an issue.
That's for the, to keep the existing.
Shared driveway.
Shared driveway and to be able to share that for the proposed house as well as the existing house.
So the second driveway would be on the outside of the tree-lined driveway that you currently have?
It would be between the trees. There's trees that line this driveway, mature trees.
Right.
So there was some concern, and that was brought up from the engineering department here, that if we widen the driveway, we could potentially impact those trees. So right now, you know, it's got nice Belgian block curbing and there's a real nice row of trees. The shared portion is relatively short, so there's plenty of site distance from the front end to the back end to avoid any conflicts. And again, right now, it's actually being shared between the house in the front and Mr. Speziale, who's there quite often to maintain the horses at the barn.
And then no issue with safety equipment getting back there?
The bridge, it goes over that small stream?
This driveway doesn't have a bridge.
Yeah, that's down the street from that.
So questions or comments by board members or by other town professionals? If not, I'll open it up to the public. Are there any members of the public here to speak for or against the project? There being none, we will, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye. And we will, I'll read a negative declaration for the project so that the applicant can proceed to the zoning board of appeals, and then we'll have you back for the final approval after that is accomplished. This negative declaration is for special, special.
Spezia.
Two-lot subdivision. My apologies. It's an unlisted action. I'm going to summarize this. The actual negative declaration will be in the planning department for anybody that would like to read it in its entirety. The proposed action would result in subdivision of an eighteen-point-one-four acre with an existing home into two lots in an R-one zoning district. The proposed residential use would be consistent with zoning and neighborhood character. The proposed project would not be expected to result in any significant adverse impacts on the environment for the following reasons. It will not generate a significant amount of additional vehicles, noise, or emission levels, will not significantly affect rare or endangered species of animal or plant or habitat of such species, it will not result in any impacts to historic or archaeological resources, will not result in any impacts related to hazardous materials, will not result in significant effect on air-water quality or ambient noise levels for adjoining areas, will not be subjected to unacceptable risk of flooding or major geological hazards, will not have a substantial aesthetic effect, will not involve adversely affect any surface water or groundwater, will not allow for improper uses within specific zoning districts, will not result in adverse cumulative impacts, will not result in adverse growth-inducing impacts, and will not conflict with the town's comprehensive plan. Therefore, there appear to be no significant adverse environmental impacts, and so I'll accept a motion to approve this negative declaration.
So moved.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie's.
All right, thank you.
Yes, and we look forward to seeing you at the next meeting.
Same here.
The next item for discussion is Mary Lane subdivision.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Timothy Davis, and my wife and I are the owners of the proposed subdivision of ten Mary Lane. We know that we still have some revisions that need to be made, but the engineer and the land surveyor are working to have them completed by next month's meeting. And also, if you guys had the opportunity to review the description that was submitted, and if there's any questions or concerns about that, so that can also be reviewed or also be ready for next month's meeting.
You, I know you circulated. How many, are we close to the thirty? It'll be next meeting that we can declare lead agency? Okay, perfect.
Is that a yes? The next meeting, that we would do that? Okay. So we'll hold that until the next time. And but before the meeting's over, I think we can schedule a public hearing for the project, right? But we'll continue the discussion for the moment. Any questions or comments by board members? Any questions or comments from our professionals?
I think in between now and the next meeting, if you could have your engineer contact staff just about some placement of the septic and other utilities, I think that would help move the project along.
Yes, sir. Excellent. So there's no other questions or comments. I'll accept a motion to schedule a public hearing. Is the April eighteenth meeting acceptable? So to schedule a public hearing for Mary Lane subdivision for our April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
We'll see you then.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Kevin, I just noticed that you just walked in. The meeting started at six, and we've already talked to your project. You're all set to go, I believe. I saw you walk in, and I figured that's what you were doing.
Next item on the agenda is Rising Sky Housing, Donovan Drive.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't know if you posted up there or do I need my board? Evening, Joseph Ferg, our great engineer for the applicant. Just here to continue review through the board. With anything else, it's the contractor's yard on a little over two acres for sixteen employees. Presented till the last month. Got some comments today from your engineer. We are currently before the board of health, getting their review, and we'll start responding to those comments for the next meeting.
And I believe you circulated as well.
We did circulate.
I just don't remember which date it was.
Same as the last, so I don't think we're going to have the thirty yet. So next month we'll make it.
Okay.
So we're in the same condition.
Okay. So questions or comments from board members?
What nature of vehicles is being stored in the building?
These would be contractors' built trucks, basically vehicles that typical contractors would have. Making the trucks. I don't perceive cars being stored there because the front parking is for the employees when they come in. The vehicles in the back, and it's not going to be for their typical trucks, handle trucks, small pickup trucks, larger pickup trucks.
Is there fuel stored onsite?
There's going to be a fuel tank. We have shown.
You moved that away from the building?
Yes, we did. We've fine-tuned the design, which moves it away.
That's for diesel?
Yes. And we have a grease trap there. We've shown a grease trap for the hole. We've basically done collect the soil where the entire bottom pad area, and it's all the trucks will do, and say just a washing area, collected into a larger grease trap and have that feed into the infiltrators. So we've progressed the drawing further ahead as we moved through the health department. From the last time we were more on sketch plan, we're more progressive with the design.
Your heating is going to be propane?
Probably. LP. We have a tank showing, yes. So yes.
So how large?
Probably yes.
How large are those two tanks, the diesel and the propane?
Pardon?
How large are the two tanks, the diesel and the propane?
The diesel tank was going to be.
Four thousand?
Probably. Probably four.
Four thousand.
That's the typical size, yes. It's one of the compartment ones that you buy, you put down when I skim out, is I guess the way you call it, covered tank.
All right, above ground?
Above ground, covered on concrete, concrete, covered with bollards to protect. Further away, we put it further away for safety.
Did you say four thousand or four hundred?
Four thousand.
Does that trigger a finger bolt?
That's a big one.
I don't think you can do that.
He's four hundred.
That's a big tank.
Four hundred.
Yeah, four thousand.
It's four hundred. Sometimes the dimensions go. A four thousand would be size what you would see in a gas station. We usually do five and tens.
Yeah, I mean, five.
The size I got there is four to five, four hundred. Four hundred.
All right.
Slip it a tongue, sorry. It's too late in the day.
And do I recall from your prior presentations, this next door to a daycare center?
Yes, it is.
Got it.
We've added additional screen as the boards. Not only are we down into the hillside, it's blocked up. So it'll be from here, you rise and back down again is the way we cut into the hillside for this. We extended on that one, and we showed landscape all the way through here. And as the landscape dig down here and there, we'll try and just read it completely. So for sound purpose, well, this is only during the day anyway, but daycare is during the day as well. But the terrain itself, because we'll be below in the ground, there'll be a rise and fall, so that will block the sound, but the trees will do a visual.
Okay.
So we think we've accomplished both of those concerns.
And are there any residential uses that you need to screen from as well now?
No residences anywhere nearby.
Okay.
Can you remind me what the fence is going to look like that you're placing between you and the daycare? Can you just remind me what the fence looks like? Is it a white vinyl fence or?
White vinyl for the maintenance.
And how tall will it be?
This is eight or six foot. That's your height for.
So once you go up on top, like how tall will it be in total?
It will be about a foot, maybe around.
So it'll be about seven?
So about seven.
Okay.
Yes.
Is that going to be a step as you go further up into the property, Joe?
The wall will be, that's good. The wall is set, yes. So the fence will have, it won't slide, it'll stand, yes.
And you said there, I believe you said last time there would be no, like, open piles of soil or anything that'd blow around the site?
No, no provisions for external storage.
Aside from vehicles?
Yeah, the vehicles, but then materials, I think was the question, more blocks, just the trucks themselves.
And largely no public here, just employees coming?
This is employees, yeah.
So I apologize, I can't really see this. Is this, these are drive-through bays or? No, they're not. So how much space is behind the building?
Basically, it's going to have some here and there. Trouble like walk-in.
Okay.
The doors will walk in, office is a room, and that will be the base.
Okay, so there's sufficient driving space behind the building, okay?
We don't want them to drive through.
Right.
All the commercial vehicles, if you want to call them that, are in the back.
Okay.
Only in the front is for the cars. So we have a large bay here, large distance between here and there, so that they can back in and park. These are large enough, we can stack to smaller vehicles, or well, large vehicles. Again, not knowing the preschool coming into the space, it could be contractors, landscape contractors that have smaller pickup trucks, all the way to a small contractor that has larger trucks.
So I just, can I just make a point?
Yes.
It just came back to me. So I guess there's multiple tenants here, right?
Yes.
So just something to consider, if it was one tenant and there was trouble like with truck speeding or whatever, we just go to one person and say, you got to resolve this problem?
That would be the client, the applicant is going, his office is going to be there. He's going to be running the building.
Because we don't want to hear, we got to go talk to the tenant.
You're going to talk to the owner.
But we're still going to have one person if there's.
Applicant is going to be responsible. Any complaints in the town, you go to him.
How many tenants do you anticipate having?
I think we have five spaces.
Five, right?
So that's five different tenants?
Well, no problem, or up to, but my client is thinking of keeping several of them himself. So it could be three or four.
What?
Then somebody could rent two spaces, too. So it could be two tenants, up to four with him. So five different uses, or five different, no, it was a uses, five different occupants.
What about lighting?
It's going to be daytime lighting. We will have some lighting. We'll develop that plan for you.
Okay.
It's going to be nighttime, it's going to be turned off.
And are you going to have any sort of signage at the front of your driveway?
We show the location.
You did?
We do have a line in sign in front.
Okay.
Just to show more of the address.
Perfect.
On industry drive.
Okay.
The name of the contractor, so people don't worry about it. More of a signage for destination. UPS knows where to go.
So we won't have five designations? It'll just have the address, or will you have, you know, five separate?
Let me get back to you on that. They may have the smaller slots so people know they're there.
They can list.
But we're not talking about the KMR-style giant signage. It should be more of what would you find going to a normal commercial professional site where Granger, Office five, Bob Smith, Office six, just enough so someone coming there knows they can go inside.
And who's there?
But it's not going to be huge, five-foot by five-foot advertising.
Retail marquee.
No, no.
So I have a question for the firemen over here. If he's got separate tenants, what the fire protection might be between the units? You know, if it's just one tenant, I imagine it's one standard, one open space, but if you have individual suites.
Are they separated out?
Separated out.
Right.
It's a separate wall, it'll be fire rated.
Yeah.
Fire wall, you have to double, yeah, double sheet rock.
Yeah, or look at us to disparate more needs.
Yeah, you're looking into it.
We're looking into whether, what the code is. The architect is developing those plans right now, so I don't want to answer that will be sprinkler or not until we.
Well, what's the total square footage of the building?
Nine thousand.
Yeah, so what are our requirements for sprinkler in the township by square foot, right?
I'm not the building inspector.
The architect's looking into that and following the code and stuff.
First thing is you have to be able to supply it with water, and there's no water over there.
No, we would have storage tank. That would be a standard.
Storage and pumping. It's going to be a big.
Yeah, I mean, there's other ways to do it with chemical, too, but the architect is looking at that right now.
That's to be part of this review, I would imagine, not, I don't know if that should be part of this review or the building department review. I'm not sure.
It'll be developed as we move forward.
Are vehicles going to be serviced in here?
Not as, not as a service yard, but you know, typically, small service will always be done in any contractor's yard. They break down, there'll be some maintenance, but not, there's a distinguishing between maintenance and service. You're not going to be doing rebuilds or tune-ups or anything, but if a machine breaks down, you're going to work on it in your shop, yes.
But he's not four high or?
No, no, no. This is what a contractor would do to maintain his equipment within his shop.
Maybe we just need a little bit of a narrative on that, because we need to know what type of stuff is going to be there, because that might go to a different type of use. So we need to understand what that means, okay?
We want to keep it within the use that's allowed, so we could discuss that with you, what is exactly the restrictions and put those restrictions on, because it's hard for us to describe what our tenants will do, but we could certainly put the restrictions on our tenants, which may be easier way to do that, because we don't know who they are yet. But I could certainly work with you to come. But I could certainly work with you to come up with other restrictions, what we think we would, a normal person would do for a business.
Now, I don't...
Write on the plan, come up with what's allowed.
Okay, perfect, well, we can give you that.
That makes a lot of sense to me too, so then there's no question down the road.
And they would then become like leasehold requirements if he were to sign leases with the tenants?
Yeah, that would be part of the lease too, that anything, any lease would include the site plan restrictions and requirements within the lease. That way, the owner could enforce it.
Do you, or did you receive the comments from fire advisory board?
No, we have not received any. Oh, no, yes, we did, we had the three comments, yes, I'm sorry, that's incorrect. About the fire, the Knox box, which obviously...
Knox box, alarm, fire alarm system, obviously sprinkler.
The fire alarm system, Knox box, absolutely, the sprinkler, that was assigned to the architect to decide and work through, so, yes, we did, thank you for that.
Thank you.
But yes, and they were immediately given to the architect, who's working on the plans now, and working through the town code and seeing what we need to do.
So each space would need its own fire alarm?
Yeah, I would have made, the fire alarms, we'd have to have zoned inside each bay.
Yes.
Zoned with a control box, so you could tell if there's a problem.
Yeah, I assume it would be five separate, just like you would in an office building, each office, considered an office, there'd be five different fire zones.
And then if you have a fire wall, you'd need five separate Knox boxes for...
No, no, the Knox box can, the idea of a Knox box is it contains all the keys to get in and out of all the units.
Yeah, you mean the outside one Knox box for a building like this, and you're right. I've done that before, especially for, with the one Knox box keys inside, yes.
My only other concern would be the types of vehicles, standard construction is fine, but if somebody would have an inclination to store larger amounts of fuel in a vehicle inside, sometimes they carry their own fuel on them, and just being aware of what's in those bays.
There's a restriction in the...
Well, that's, I think that goes in what we discussed a couple minutes ago of meeting with and discussing with the town planner.
There's actually in the language, there's a restriction on the type of hazardous materials and fuels they can store, so we'll make sure that restriction's on there.
So we'll come up with a, how do you want to call it, a table of what's allowed, along with the planner, what you input from the planning board, and that will be the restriction of place on a site plan, which will go in the leases. So there won't be any, I didn't know, I didn't have to do that. So that's the best, have that done. So I'll start with that, bounce it back and forth, and make sure we get what's right.
I don't remember if we referred you to the ARC last time.
Yes, you did.
Okay, so have you gotten to them yet?
Architect has reached out for the application, he's finishing up the drawings to send in, yes.
Okay, perfect, so you have, you scheduled a meeting to meet with the architectural review council yet?
The architect has, yes.
Okay, so you think they've set it up, okay.
Yes.
So we'll check it out. Because they're probably the beginning of next month, I think, right before your next meeting.
I'll verify, let you know.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we thank you, so...
So what I'm going to work on is the comments, especially come up, contact the town planner, town engineer on the restrictions and add to it. And I want to check on the fuel amount, get back to you on the sprinklers, maybe develop further.
Excellent, and lighting?
Lighting is a normal progression of the plan, yes.
Yep, okay, excellent.
Are we at the point where we can go to a public hearing, or do we need to...
Are we at that point?
Get it from the neighbors, maybe?
I don't think there's going to be any significant changes to layout right now, right?
No. So that way we get some input as we develop further, if that's possible.
So I'll accept a motion to schedule a public hearing, and are you looking to do that on April, the April 18th meeting?
Sure, if it's allowed.
So, accept a motion to schedule a public hearing for Rising Sky Housing for our April 18th, 2023 meeting.
So move?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thanks very much.
Next item on the agenda is Nail Clean Corporation. Is there anyone here for the applicant Nail Clean?
Oh, okay, so he's out of the country.
Yes.
So this one's kind of, this one, you'll know the site. This is the site on Hazard Mountain Road that was originally, well, recently we had Poffick Paws was going to go there, and they never went there. Prior to that, there was a flea market that was proposed there. This site doesn't have really any approved site plan, because it pre-existed. This new company wants to come in, they do, they do these cleaning, water cleaning devices, they're relatively small, they look almost like humidifiers or dehumidifier size, and they sterilize water to be used in medical equipment and like in computer equipment. They have a service business that they do, so they take calls, and then they also do minor, minor repair on the units, and they want to do that in this location. So they're not doing anything to the outside, but it is a change of use of what was there. Previously, it actually goes back to what the original, very original use, probably twenty-some-odd years ago, was some IBM subcontractor, it's probably more similar to that use. But they would have very few people in and out, I think it's maybe two employees, and it sounds like it's largely a call center where they talk them through the repairs, but sometimes the pieces of equipment have to get sent to them if there's something difficult, and then they look, work on it there. But it's not, there's no major, there's no chemicals used, and there's no welding or anything like that, if there's, might be some small soldering.
And no change in like need for parking or...
No, it's just the two of them, so essentially, it's a super minor site plan, and I just wanted to bring it to you, because we don't, it's a little bit odd, because we don't have any approved site plan on site for this, because it pre-existed. So we do have a recent survey that was used in the other two applications, the site plans that we approved for the other two applications were never signed. So we can, we know exactly what's on the site because of those plans that were done, but we don't have an approved site plan.
So like the existing use right now is for like offices?
It's empty, and it used to be, I think they did some sort of, is it HVAC or something there for, it was a subcontractor, there's some sort of HVAC systems there, but it hasn't been used that way in, I want to say decades.
Ten years, ten years.
And it's been for sale forever.
I think there's a kitchen in there, is there a kitchen in there?
I didn't know there was a kitchen there.
In the back building.
In the back?
There's two buildings on the site, a blue metal building and a red building. One of them has a kitchen in it.
We should just make, you know, I mean, I'm not saying it's not permitted or could be approved, but we should know whether they intend to live there as well or not.
So it's like the only B-zoned parcel in the middle of a bunch of residential parcels, in the middle of a farm in one side, and then, so it is an odd use, and we always had to be concerned about the neighbors, because there's so much residential there, that that was always a concern about putting in business in there, so this, I think, would be a relatively low...
In the past, I think, there was discussion about a flea market there, a dog kennel, so I think this is one of the lowest...
Yeah, the dog kennel one, I remember.
Yeah, I remember that one, yeah.
That was recent, yeah.
But I just wanted to basically make you aware of it, because it's kind of like just a change of use, essentially.
So is this like the things that they're producing, are they like households, or are they like...
No, they're for...
Commercial.
Commercial, and they don't produce, they're not actually manufacturing there, they're only servicing, so they're taking phone calls and then fixing, repairing, if they have to. And it doesn't sound like it's that often, it's usually like they talk the person through the fixing of it, and then sometimes they'll have to have the units come, it's almost like computer size. It's almost would be like looking like a computer repair place.
And how many employees would you say?
It seemed like there may be just two. And they're not here very often, they're in Korea a lot.
Does it have the potential to become more than that?
I don't think so, but we can certainly put the restrictions on them if anything changes, they have to come back to it.
It's a fair sized building, I mean, you could certainly have more than two people.
Absolutely.
I'm wondering about like...
Does it, maybe?
Manufacturing. I don't know about many, much more than that, but... According to his narrative, we made him write it out, there was no manufacturer, made
him state that, but, you know, I don't know if he's, if his, I don't know the reason, if the reason he's locating here is because he's the clean rooms and they sterilize water, so maybe, you know, in the future, if there's more, you know, I don't know if that's one of the reasons.
If they're being manufactured, though, it'd be a violation of their site plan, if that's not approved here, and then they'll get a violation, they'll have to come back.
Yes, and there's no truck deliveries or anything, so...
So is this something that requires an action by this board?
I think I just wanted to make the board aware of it, that I was going in there, and then talk to you about whether or not you would require a site plan from him. You know, we were thinking that we could use the existing plans that were done, because it's just accurate survey.
And how would you place the restrictions then, like, how would you...
Well, maybe what we could do is that we could make a, I guess we could make a motion, and...
We could make a motion that the prior site plan's approved, and the condition on the site plan itself will be no manufacturing will take place.
And limiting, I would say, maybe the amount of employees, I mean, to the parking that's, you know, there and existing on the site plan, like...
Yeah, maybe we could say if more than five employees must come back to the planning board.
Planning board for further review.
Okay.
Wasn't there something we wanted, a structure we wanted removed, or...
They removed them, they had containers on the site, two of them the previous owner, and they removed those.
Okay, so they're not part of the site plan?
Yeah, they've been removed. The containers are no longer...
Is there anything else about the site that we would expect to be done before they could occupy?
I don't believe, the parking lot isn't paved, I think it's millings, it's not paved or striped in any manner either.
I guess the only other thing would be what Scott mentioned, if they have that kitchen or whatever that accessory building is, would we have some kind of...
That requires approval by the planning board for like a caretaker.
So maybe what we could do is as part of this motion, is we could say we need to do a site visit.
Yeah.
We could have the building party site visit.
And confirm what they want to do with that second building.
Yeah, if the kitchen's even still there, but I know once upon a time there was a kitchen in there.
So it wouldn't be a bad idea to get in there and take a look at it, so we could do that as part of the...
Well, it sounds like you're needing to put everything on this plan that we don't know, or that's a variable, so that we can kind of keep it in a box, so to speak.
And I would ask, if there's any kind of storage of equipment or parts in there, that, even though they're not hazardous, could be combustible, whatever, I'm sure there's no fire alarm system in there.
Oh.
I just wonder about the potential of what the business is going to grow to, because it's odd that two people would need a whole building for a call center, which is fine, you know, if it's going to be, they have spare parts for refurbishing equipment and things like that.
Like store the stuff that comes in and then send it out from there.
And that's fine, but it sounds like it has potential to grow a lot and use the space, which could potentially have impacts with trucks and, you know, whatever else comes along with, even if it's light manufacturing, or it's, they're not making anything, they're refurbishing all of the machines, things like that, it sounds like it has potential to become that.
We know the history of what it once was.
The building?
Yeah. Was it manufacturing?
It was some sort of HVAC, I think, or some...
It had something to do with IBM, right?
Yeah, it was a subcontractor, and they did some sort of light, like HVAC repair or something there, for some special, I think for the special clean room systems that were in there, something like that.
So maybe what we should do then is, because it sounds like the board has some questions, we can submit your questions to the applicant, they'll give us, you know, they'll enhance their narrative, and then the board can have a...
And then I could actually write a resolution, so we can have it.
Yeah, that we delineate all those things, just because I think, like Sarah said, like just to put it out there with so many variables and not have answers, especially a site, if there's a kitchen there and stuff like that, there's no fire alarm system, you know, those would be major concerns, especially regardless of what they're doing in there, they have to have, if it's a commercial establishment, they should have some type of fire alarm, at least, smoke and fire and carbon.
I'd be concerned about any kind of solvents they're storing there to clean with, or...
They could be cleaning something and using some type of special solvents, or flammable or whatever it may be. And then, like we said, the parking... And then truck traffic.
Water and sewer out there?
No. On their own.
Okay, so we'll defer action on that, and...
Yeah, so I'll go back and get the information, and then we can do a formal resolution when they're here next time, and we can also ask him more questions, because he was supposed to be here tonight.
Okay.
Okay, excellent, thank you, appreciate the presentation though, Michelle. So, next item on the agenda, MDJ Corporation. Is there anyone here for that applicant? There being none, I'm not sure that we necessarily need to go through anything, and we can determine if they want to come back in another meeting. So the final item on the agenda, sorry about the delay for you, is Emma's Cafe.
For not least.
And we've seen Emma's Cafe before, once here, and...
Yes, my name is Walter, I'm looking to build a thirty by twenty pavilion at Emma's Cafe.
And where's that going on the site?
I handed in a site plan, it's going to be towards the back, in between, halfway out the property.
And it's not impinging on like any of the existing parking?
No, it's outside the park and...
Before?
Someplace to hang out, sit, watch the sun come up. Got no future plans for it, nothing, just a pavilion.
And you're going to have tables in there, so people can eat their ice cream and that kind of stuff in there, are you not allowing people to go?
I don't know yet, you know?
Must be a purpose of building it, though.
Well, I don't know if anybody's been to the place in Dover, Kelly's Creamery, and they have a large pavilion there, almost the same thing, and it's pretty nice.
Do they have tables and chairs and stuff?
They do, they don't have any indoor seating, or they don't have anything. Well, they do have miniature golf now.
Is it going to be enclosed, or is it going to be, it's just like a roof?
Just a roof, that's it.
And like concrete, or is it on the grass?
Just probably a peystone, a little bit of gravel.
Like a bar or anything, like literally you're just going to leave it open?
Just a roof, pavilion.
Serve food there, what is the thing?
Yeah, we have food, ice cream, you know?
A walk-up window, like a walk-up window, or...
No.
There's... You order it, and then a waiter serves you, or you just take your food?
Yeah, you go in, you could sit down and wait for them, or it's almost, it's kind of split, you go into an ice cream parlor or the cafe, and there's a deck on the back, you can sit there, or...
So you just take your food and go, leave, or you can go outside?
There's seating in there, yeah, or there's a deck, you could sit on the deck, you know, maybe throw a couple of Adagondec chairs out there and sit under the pavilion.
So I think last time you were here, there was, when you did the cafe, you had a question mark left open about what you were going to do upstairs for. Did you ever decide to do anything with the second floor?
Right, well, this is, this is a gray area for me, I wanted to put an addition on there, but apparently I don't have enough parking, so probably just going to revisit that down the road.
Is it used for anything right now?
No. No.
But would you be taking from the property that you might need for parking in the future by building this?
No.
No.
I think, I think it's, I mean, it's, it depends on what the use is upstairs for whether or not you would have enough parking.
It's going to be, it would be all open upstairs, just a big open hall.
So for you, you would do like a catering?
For a birthday party or retirement party or something like that.
Yeah, so it would be for gathering, you know, for.
Right, I would need more parking, I understand this.
Well, you may be able to have gatherings of a certain, up to a certain size.
Correct.
No, because it was presented to me that it's by the square footage and I'm already at my max with, with the cafe alone for parking. To try to have a birthday party upstairs or a retirement party and, and what if it was a nice sunny day and if we stopped ice cream, we would be, people parked down the About that friendly would be true.
Do you where's, where's your, um, where's your septic?
Oh, it's all brand new. Is it on the site plan? I don't know.
I feel like we were at, wondering where it was when we were, but maybe.
It's about 60 feet past where I'm building the pavilion.
So it's beyond, it's behind?
Yeah, it's past that.
Is there a prior site plan approved?
There's no prior site plan for this site.
I don't remember.
Well, they, he did, he's modifying the approval because he never had it signed because he had an ARB condition that, that hasn't been met yet. He was supposed to put siding on. So now he's getting, he's dealing with that. He just submitted new plans showing the siding.
Correct.
Um, so he's going, has to go back before the ARB, get those approved and that clears that condition and then he, he's modifying because we've never actually signed that site plan.
So this would become part of it. That's what he's asking to amend that.
Correct.
And this becomes part of it. Okay.
Are, are you scheduled right now with the ARB or ARC? Okay, so we have to get you on the schedule.
I'm a little confused, like, whoa, I mean, it's just a roof, you know?
Well, they just wanted to see the plans to show that siding that you were going to be doing. They wanted to see that.
I'm sorry, I was talking about the pavilion.
Yeah, yeah, no, the plan, the original condition from the original site plan still on.
For the building?
For the building, yes.
What about the building?
No, the building.
Talking about the, talking about the existing building.
He came in originally and got site plan approval, but one of the conditions was that within a year he had to side the building because there was, he was putting new siding on, so they gave him a year because he was doing changes to the outside. That condition is still open, which is why the site plan was never signed. So he also had to provide elevations of that side to the ARB. Now has those elevations because you know, because the architect was busy, crazy and they couldn't get the elevations, so now he's elevating.
I wanted to do, you know, renovate and do the addition upstairs and then when it was brought to my attention that I was lacking the parking, I just said, all right, change the siding.
Didn't they bank parking? Wasn't there a, a parking bank when they, the last time they were here?
Their parking lot is amorphous.
Right.
So it, there's no like demarcation or anything on it.
There's no lines or borders or anything.
Add additional, didn't we ask them to?
Well, there's a fence now in the back, so it's pretty clear where the edge of the parking area is. And now that the pavilion's going back there, I don't, they're, I guess they theoretically could have expanded the parking to go back where the pavilion is, but, but.
I, I don't want to expand the parking.
But he doesn't want to.
No.
And now is he outside the year of the ARB?
Not yet. No, he's got to go back to the AR, they've got to look at the side elevations and then he's got to actually side, side it before the, that's a condition of a site plan approval.
When is that year?
Yeah, that's when, when's that year up is I guess my question.
It's coming.
September, October, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So it still has time. Do you have, do you have any specific plans of when you plan to do that?
About this?
Do you, do you have?
The fires are approved because of the size of it.
The pavilion.
But is it because of the size or the structure?
It's because it's a site plan change.
Change of the site plan.
It's actually a new structure on the site plan. Yeah, exactly.
What are your?
And then, you know, the only thing I would ask is, you know, just to think about, typically we think about how the people access the pavilion. He has a deck that comes off and then it's a pretty easy path on the grass and it's fenced back to where the pavilion is. So that, you know, like we would typically look at things like how people are accessing it so they're not in the.
Yeah, walking through the parking lot.
Well designed so that it's not accessible by the folks that are coming off the building because there's a fence the whole way.
But it's not intended for people to go sit in it, like the public?
They can, the public can.
Okay.
I'm not preventing, you know, I'm not going to, don't sit here, don't, you know, stay in the parking lot.
But if you're not putting ta, tables or chairs out there, that's going to be hard for them to sit.
We've been over for five, six months and the amount of kids that came September, the end of September, were playing in the yard was great, you know? So they had a place, if it started raining, they could play, you know, do something under the pavilion or something would be great, you know? Or not.
So what, what are your plans with regards to the siding issue that you are working with the, the architectural review?
Right.
Group on?
Just changing the siding from white to the other side.
And the timing of when you expect to do that?
Well, I would probably try to pick it up right after I did the pavilion as, well, it depends on whatever I get in front of the, all right, so do I have to go in front of them for the pavilion also or just the siding?
Just the siding.
Yeah, just that pre-existing condition.
The pavilion, just a roof. You're not putting siding, changing the color or anything like that.
Six poles and a black roof.
Yeah. What happens if they build the pavilion and they runs out of money and doesn't do the siding?
That's what I'm saying, like that's why I'm asking the, the sequence here and I think that's what we're trying to establish. We would prefer that you finish the siding before the pavilion. So if, if, if we do do something here, then there may be a condition put in place that we ask that you finish the siding, then move to the pavilion project.
Okay.
Would you be, is that acceptable?
This is the only thing is, uh, you know, I'm going to have to dig some really big holes to put these big footings in and then it's like, I would like to do that like early April so we're not real busy and there's all these people and then I got to wait a couple of days for the building inspector to come and look at the holes and got to section this all off. My idea was to do it early April to, you know, before the business picked up. So I mean, as soon as I was done with the pavilion, I'd probably start hanging the siding, but I guess I got to go in front of the ARB first.
Well, the ARB has been a condition you've always had. I mean, that's not new.
No, no, no. I can't hang the siding until they say okay. So if, if they don't say okay until?
They have to go in front of the ARC to show the elevations because he didn't even have elevations last time and they wanted to see them. So he has to do that like now, get those approved and then he should be, I think he should side the building as well.
Well, the other thing we could do then is we can then say that we allow them to put the footings in to that point.
That'd be great.
And then, and then say that you finish the siding, then move to the pavilion with us allowing you a conditional, uh, you know, grant you something conditional to allow you.
Well, it could be a footing only permit we could grant.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
That would be excellent.
Does that work?
That'd be excellent.
Okay.
All right, so he's got to go in front of the ARC at the beginning of next month and then we can give him a resolution of approval of those conditions at the April 18th meeting. Once he gets.
I'm not here the first week of April, so I think they meet like the first Thursday or something.
First Thursday of the month. Well, we can talk to them about if they can meet with you another time. Maybe he can, maybe they can.
Right, well, this is where the, hey, I'd like to get the footings in as soon as possible. This gets dragged out a couple of months, at least the footings would be in and then we could put the siding up.
But the, the problem is that you've got a condition where you don't have an approved site plan until you do the siding. That's the problem. So we can talk to the ARC and see if they're available to meet with you at any other time if you're going to be away the first week of April, maybe they can meet with you the second week.
Okay.
I can, we can talk to them and see what their schedule is like.
It would probably be pretty easy for them to distribute the elevations.
He submitted the elevation.
I handed in all the.
Yeah, we can forward them.
So he has submitted everything necessary for them?
He submitted them, he submitted new elevations.
Okay.
So, so we should then just be able to basically do it via email. Okay, we've got them, they're approved, okay, you can go.
There's currently two different types of siding, two different colors of siding? Is that what it is?
It's the old.
Yeah.
So the old stuff is white and the new is gray, right?
Just on one side.
Okay, so you're just to finish what you basically said, the gray.
Just the, the one side that faces this way.
Right, right.
Got it. And so we approved it conditioned on the ARC's approval of the whole elevation siding, all of the things, but they haven't done that yet.
Right, and they, and the ARC gave them a year to finish siding because at the time he was contemplating doing an addition.
Right.
So.
So here we are now.
It's very complicated.
Okay, but you're not doing an addition anymore, that's not the plan?
No, I don't have enough parking.
Got it.
So I, I think this will probably be the plan, um, where you're going to go to the ARC. You're going to put the siding in place. Simultaneously, you can apply to the building department and the engineering department for a footings only permit. And you can do that and you can start the footings at your own risk because if you don't go and put the siding on, you're not going to get an amended site plan approval to build the actual gazebo.
Okay. I missed the beginning. So leaving here, I can apply for a footing permit and get the footings in?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. This way?
And you're going to have to meet all the qualifications too. You can't, you know, you're going to have to meet everything to a T to get the actual footings permit. Whatever sort of bonding or anything else they need, you're going to have to do.
Right, I got.
No, there's no bonding, just a building plan.
Okay. So you have to give them the building.
I handed everything in already.
Yeah.
I'm just waiting for this and maybe another.
It meets all setbacks? Have you looked at it, Matt?
Haven't looked at it yet. It should.
Do you know if you meet all your setbacks?
Think I know approximately.
I'm way away from every.
Okay.
I'm good.
I know approximately where it is.
Okay.
But I want to just say again, if you do that, you go and get the footings permit and you put them in, that's at your risk until you have a signed site plan. So if you don't finish the site plan, the, the pavilion can't be added to.
I understand it 100%.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Do we, we don't need a motion to do that? You can issue the footings permit without a motion from the board or do you prefer it?
I prefer to have it on file, yeah.
Okay.